Good evening. Being 7:00 PM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of November 18th, 2025, and Ms. Krieger will lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invocation this evening, we have Dr. Norville Brown from Cary United Methodist Church, soon to be retired, I understand.
Before I offer this prayer, I would like to continue a tradition that we do for each meeting in my church, and that is to offer what we call respectful communication guidelines. You might think it odd that in a church you might need to talk about respectful communication, but sometimes that happens, and so I share these with you today. And the respectful communication guidelines tell us that we take responsibility for what we say and feel without blaming others. This means using "I" statements such as "I think," "I feel," or "I believe" instead of "you" statements. E, we use empathy, empathetic listening. We listen not just to words, we listen to the whole person. We try to feel and to see the world as the person who is speaking sees and feels. S, we're sensitive, sensitive to differences in communication styles. We remember that people communicate in different ways, be aware of how much or how little you are speaking, and ponder if that is what is most helpful for the group. Also ask clarifying questions such as "I wonder" or "I notice." P, ponder. Ponder what you hear and how you feel before you speak. Consider what you're going to say before you say it. C, community. Remember we are all residents of this community, and the welfare of all affects one, and the welfare of one affects all. Live, work, and play to ensure the well-being of all. E, examine. Examine your own assumptions and perceptions. Think. What caused me to think or to feel a certain way now? Or were there personal experiences that I need to explore further before I speak? T, trust. Trust ambiguity because we're not here to debate who is right or wrong. In the community, there will be differences of experience, understanding, and opinion. There will be ambiguity, and that is okay. And so, we pray today. Breathe, 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 O Most Holy and Beloved One. Breathe your holy breath upon us, that holy breath that caused earth and sky, rocks and rivers, mountains and valleys, forests and desert spaces to come forth. Breathe, 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 O Most Holy and Beloved One. Breathe your holy breath upon us, that holy breath that brought forth mammals and reptiles, insects and fish, and all the animals that fill the skies, the land, and the waters. Breathe, 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 O Most Holy and Beloved One. Breathe your holy breath upon us, that holy breath that formed and shaped a being from the primordial substance of the earth, a human being in which to you blew your holy breath, an entity unlike any other in all of creation, created to care for all that you had breathed forth, all that you had fashioned. Breathe, 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 O Most Holy and Beloved One. Breathe your holy breath into this space, creating a hall where justice for all prevails, a space where the widow, the orphan, and the immigrant find an advocate and a voice, a space where all believe that we are called to live for others, that we were created to help each other, and that our lives are better and happier when others are happy because of us. Breathe, 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 O Most Holy and Beloved One. Breathe your holy breath into us and upon us so that we might truly live and truly be alive.
Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bell Top? Campbell?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Gotamoller?
Here.
Grino?
Here.
Hendricks?
Here.
Kaminsky?
Present.
Kearns?
Here.
Krieger?
Here.
Kunkel?
Here.
Sager?
Here.
Shorten?
Here.
Scala?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Van Hoff?
Present.
Von Bergen?
Here.
We have a quorum. With that, we'll proceed. Before we get the motion to adopt the agenda, I just want to let the board know that Item 10A8, the petitioner has asked to postpone this until next month's meeting. It's a P. I think it's next month's meeting, so that will not be voted on tonight. And also, the special recognition was done last Thursday, so we will not have those two on the agenda. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Kaminsky seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Collins seconds. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Good evening. In the interest of time this evening, I'll keep my report to the board brief. After months of thoughtful and earnest discussion, we'll be voting tonight on the budget and levy for the 2026 fiscal year. This has been a very challenging budget for everyone, and again, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank county administration, Chief Financial Officer Cary Wise, Finance and Audit Committee, and Chairman Mike Scala, and also our department heads in the county board for their ideas. With the spring goal of crafting a Housing Readiness Action Plan with McHenry County, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning has been busy. Last week, they met with our Housing Readiness Task Force here at the county administration building, and the week prior, they met with local realtors and community partners. They also had a booth at the MCEDC Annual Dinner, and yesterday, they met with local mayors and village presidents. Thank you to CBET for their hard work, and thank you to everyone who has provided them with input. That concludes my report, and I wish you all and everyone watching us tonight a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving and safe travels. Do any members have comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to zoning petitions. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the zoning consent agenda? Mr. Kaminsky?
I'd like to take 10A-7, 10A-6, and 10A-4.
Okay, any others? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda, less items, 10A4, 10A6, and 10A7. Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Gotamoller seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve Item 10A4. Mr. Gotamoller makes the motion, Mr. Smith seconds. Mr. Gotamoller?
Yes, I know this is one of the solar farms that we're talking about today, and I don't want it to get mixed in with the next solar farm we're going to talk about. I do believe this is a good location for a solar farm. It passed 70, and if we're going to have a solar farm, this is the kind of locations we want to be looking for.
Ms. Von Bergen?
Thank you. So my comment is pretty much about all of the solar farms that are, that have been pulled. And I just want to say, as a farmer in McHenry County, I am deeply concerned about the state legislation that removes our local ability to deny or place reasonable conditions on proposed solar farms. I value renewable energy and understand the importance of moving toward a more sustainable future, but not at the expense of some of the most productive agricultural land in Illinois. Once farmland is converted, it rarely comes back into production, and the generations of farmers who come after us will feel that loss. Local farmers, landowners, and communities should have a voice in decisions that impact our soil, our food supply, and our rural character. Farmers spend their money in the community, support local businesses, and help keep our rural economy strong. Losing farmland means losing that local investment. While renewable energy may have a place in our future, I think agriculture has more so, and we must find a balance that honors both, or the next generation of our farming community depends on it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on 10A4? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve Item 10A6. Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Sager seconds. Discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve Item 10A7. Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Collins seconds. Discussion? Mr. Gotamoller?
My understanding is we aren't supposed to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. I've moved to continue this to next month's meeting.
Mr. Gotamoller makes the motion to postpone the next month's voting meeting. Mr. Kaminsky is second. Discussion on that motion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I got to refer to Adam, Director PED, and the timing on this, and what our timing restraints are, and what are the consequences if we don't stay within those constraints. Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome. So the state statute that regulates solar farms, solar installations, do require a vote within 30 days of the close of the public hearing. They require county board to act and make a zoning decision, is the way it's phrased within the state law. The second part of your question in terms of, you know, what does that mean? I think that's more of a legal question, you know, what would come from that? But any ordinary petition, it would go out and you have 180 days, but with the state law, it's specific in its request for 30.
Ms. Gary, State's Attorney's Office?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Mr. Adam is correct in saying that the statute requires a decision by the county board within 30 days. That statute is 12020, Section C. With respect to what the consequences are, I'm going to defer to Assistant State's Attorney Barrett.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep this brief because I'm sure that you don't want to fall asleep in your chairs listening to me ramble on about the jurisprudence of direct, reverse, mandatory statutes. But what I will say is, the answer is unclear. The statute doesn't provide for what the consequence of failing to make that decision is. However, I think we could expect that there is the potential, depending on where the parties are situated, that we could face court action for us to make a decision called a mandamus action, and that's where I'd like to leave it, if that's okay. I don't want to go into too much more detail out in the public here.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Trying to phrase this. If this were to go 30 days, legal action coming in at that point, if that was taken off the table, would that legal action go away, or would that still be held against the county?
That's a good question, Mr. Kaminsky. It would ultimately depend on what they pled. So while I could sit here and give you the little bit of maybe see-through-the-fog of my crystal ball, so to speak, I could have an idea of maybe what that action might look like, but that doesn't mean that we're limited into what we're facing. So it's difficult for me to hear now to answer that question about what other consequences there could be, because there's always a concern for a due process claim, not to say that it would be successful or not, but there is always that consideration when we're talking about zoning.
Mr. Scala?
Yes, two questions. We had addressed at the committee, the whole meeting, the State's Attorney to see if there was any changes to the status of the law and how it applies to us, and I would like that information. And then the second question is to Mr. Gotamoller and what his thought process is by postponing it to the next board meeting.
Mr. Scala, sorry, thank you. Mr. Scala, with respect to the changes, what specifically were you inquiring about?
The board had asked the State's Attorney's Office to review if there was anything that had changed in the law that would change our position as far as what we are capable of either voting yes or no in regard to... Right now, my understanding is that the law states that we don't really have a choice, that the law makes it very clear that we are to approve. We can't challenge it, we can't change it, we can't modify it, we can't do anything to it. Now, we all are aware that there are many lawsuits in many municipalities and counties that they are also just as frustrated as we are, and have turned down requests and have found themselves in court. So I'm trying to understand, I'm going beyond what the board actually asked, but I think we're all looking for the same answer. Has any of these cases come to fruition, and if so, what was the outcome of them?
Okay, now I understand your question. Thank you for clarifying. So, yes, there are several lawsuits that are currently pending in what I will call the sister counties that are immediately surrounding us. There are three pending solar farm cases in Will County at the trial court level. Those cases have been fully briefed, and what I mean by that is, the applicants, their petitions have been denied by the county, so the solar farms have initiated separate lawsuits against the county at the trial court level. Those cases are still pending. The court's decision has not yet been decided or made within those three specific cases. Winnebago County, again, the county denied the application. In that particular case, the court, the trial court, they believed that the mandamus action was improper, and that case is currently up on appeal in the appellate court, or the appellate court level. Grundy County also has a pending solar farm case. In that particular case, the trial court sided with the applicant, and that case is currently up on appeal. So basically, we don't have a definitive answer. In the meantime, we now have the legislature that has enacted legislation, we all know it now to be the Omnibus Energy Bill. It contains a whole bunch of stuff, and in the middle of this thing, it also amends several sections of the county's code, specifically 12020, if I'm not mistaken, and 12024. It also adds what has been characterized as the Solar Farm Bill of Rights. And in that particular section of the Omnibus Energy Bill, it allows the prevailing party, unlike what's in the county's code now, but it allows the prevailing party in these types of matters to recoup their attorney's fees and costs. I don't know if I left anything out, but just feel free to jump in.
There was also, in the same division of the Solar Bill of Rights, portion of the Omnibus Energy Bill, there is a more, I'll call it emphatic, language about the prohibition on the exercise of any county power to render a decision that would ultimately have the effect of disallowing a solar farm. That's, it has been passed, from my understanding, by the General Assembly, but I don't believe it's been signed yet.
Mr. Hendricks?
Well, can Mr. Gotamoller answer my second question?
Mr. Gotamoller?
Sometimes time is a good thing, and I just think if we have 30 more days to look at this, we may find out a little more whether Senate Bill 25 gets signed, we may find out what the neighborhood municipality does on this particular project, and I would like that 30 days to go by. It's not even quite 30 days. I would like us to have that opportunity.
Mr. Hendricks?
You said, you said we have 30 days to, and when, that was October, correct me if I'm wrong, it was October 17? Or Adam?
Yeah, I'll confirm the exact dates. October 16 is the date of the voting meeting.
So we're already, we're already over the 30 days, then?
Correct, correct. The 30 days is intended to be at the next county board meeting, is the intent of that particular one.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gotamoller?
So if we're already over the 30 days, it's been passed without our approval, we don't have to vote at all. It's just approved.
I don't believe that the statute has that language about automatic approval like our county board rules do for past 180 days. I think, and I apologize if that got lost in the wash here, but there is no consequence that I've found that would be akin to what we see in our county board rules about not making a decision on a particular zoning petition that's not a conditional use for a solar farm within 180-day timeframe.
Mr. Sager?
Thanks, Jer. With all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Gotamoller, I don't know that this postponement would do anything positively for us in the long term. I think we need to make a decision. I think that's in the best interest of both the residents, as well as the petitioner, and I would respectfully request us to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
I want a show of hands for the ayes, please. I believe we've got a majority, so the motion does carry. We'll postpone to next month's meeting, which I believe is December, December 16. Okay, with that, we're through the zoning public comment. Okay, just a reminder, public comment is your opportunity to address the board. You'll have three minutes with which to do so, at which time the red light will come on in front of me. If you haven't completed your comments, I would ask you to do so. And yeah, so we've got quite a few here. Those who have checked to speak are the ones I'm going to be calling. First one, Brittany Krebsbach. That's what I thought. Followed by Dylan Holm?
Hi, good evening. Thank you, first of all, so much for your time, county board members. My name's Brittany Krebsbach. I am a senior developer with Pivot. I am here representing the Pivot Energy Illinois 216 LLC solar project in District 9 tonight. I don't technically have anything prepared, but I did just want to introduce myself, say thank you, and also say that I am more than happy to listen to any concerns about the siting law and about how we cite our projects and how we try to do a community-driven, you know, development for our project as well. Hopefully, you read my memo today to give you a little bit of a snapshot, otherwise, the zoning board meetings are always a great deep dive, they do excellent work, and your county office as well. So I really just wanted to put a face to the name, say thank you so much, and I will leave a couple of my cards, or you can grab my information from the zoning office. I talk to Kim very regularly, and I'm always happy to take conversations just about anything to do with Pivot Energy projects, and I really look forward to honoring our commitments, and thank you once again for your time.
Okay, next Dylan Holm, is it? Followed by Renee Weigert?
Hi, thanks. It's Dylan Haber, and I'm the developer with Water Locust Solar, which is owned by Cultivate Power. I just want to say I'm a little bit disappointed here that we didn't get our vote tonight and we haven't moved forward. We feel like we've been very transparent and engaging throughout this entire process. I myself have put in a ton of time out in the community, engaging the locals with phone calls, with door knocking, spending ample hours trying to answer questions and dispel some of the concerns that they have about solar. I feel like we've made good progress. We even hosted an open house a few weeks back in advance of the ZBA vote. We did, you know, follow all of the conditions required in the state siting bill. We went to the ZBA, we got a unanimous recommendation of approval here, and we feel like, you know, we've been transparent. I've been out in the community here, I've been in touch with the fire department, I've been in touch with community groups, environmental groups, just trying to understand concerns and hear about, you know, the concerns and answer the questions. So, um, you know, I, obviously you, you, you made your decision to, uh, to continue to us until next month, and so we'll, uh, we'll take it from there. But appreciate your time. Thank you.
Renee Weigert, is it? Weigert. Followed by Joan Brum.
Good evening. My name is Renee Weigert and I live directly next to the proposed solar site on Spring Grove Road and Ringwood Road. Chair members, board members, and everyone else who came out tonight, I thank you. You, the board, have been placed in a very difficult position. What you did tonight wasn't small, it wasn't political, it wasn't convenient, it was courageous. By postponing this vote until December 16th, you sent a message to every person in this room. McHenry County is not a testing ground. Our health is not negotiable. And our future generations will not be jeopardized. You didn't ignore the risk, you saw them, the stacking effects of the EMFs, the concerns about the contamination of water, fire hazards, blinding glare, wildlife disruption. You recognize what so many of us have been trying to voice. The long-term safety data simply isn't there. That matters more than you know. And as someone who's lived here for nearly two decades, I commend you for that. I want to say this clearly, tonight is not the end. Tonight is the beginning because we just witnessed something powerful, something rare. When a community shows up, when people speak with clarity and conviction, when neighbors stand together shoulder to shoulder, change happens. Leaders listen and the communities unite. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for listening, thank you for leading. Thank you, most importantly, for taking the time to protect what we call home. Thank you.
Joan Brum, followed by Stephanie Tesmer.
I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I really am very happy with this extension. I have asked at our last board meeting that if another ECAT become, ECOCAT be made done that is more extensive to look at the water systems that surround where this solar farm is going to be placed. I ask that you have the time now to have that done as well as assess the natural resource of the wildlife corridor. Please look at those two items. Those are really important to our community, our well system, and we need your support in that. Thank you very much.
Stephanie Tesmer. Followed by Kathleen Schluter.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Tesmer and I speak to you tonight as both a resident of McHenry County and a community advocate for families, seniors, and working people already stretched to the breaking point. Sorry, I reached up here. You are proposing a 13.55% increase in the corporate and special purpose property tax levy, raising it from 64.99 million to 73.8 million. According to your own presentations, this means the average homeowner would pay roughly $59.81 more per year without abatement or around $32.99 with abatement. For many people, this is another bill they simply cannot afford. Many already face property taxes higher than their mortgages. Seniors, fixed income families, and hardworking residents will feel this increase immediately. And let's not forget, many of you ran on a promise not to raise taxes. Campaign slogans meant voters could trust you to protect them from higher bills. Yet here we are being asked to accept this levy hike while talks of possible board races continue. This is not leadership, this is a betrayal of public trust. Meanwhile, essential programs, youth initiatives, senior services, mental health outreach, and infrastructure maintenance are being squeezed. Your decision is forcing families to pay more while community services suffer and all to fund priorities that benefit the politicians and insiders rather than the people who elected you. Transparency isn't enough. Publishing numbers in open book is meaningless if residents cannot clearly see why money is being allocated, why programs are cut, and why taxes are going up. These are not just numbers on a spreadsheet, these are people's lives. Every additional dolly, dollar you levy is a hardship, a strain, a decision force on families who are already balancing in possibly tight budgets. I'm urging you, reconsider and reverse this levy increase. Stop hiding behind percentages and averages. Stop breaking promises. Protect your constituents, protect your community, and stop putting political or personal gain above the very residents who fund this. Thank you for your time.
Kathleen Schluter.
Hi, um, I'm Kathleen Lakemore. I'm a retired attorney. I spent most of my career as a legal aid lawyer. I'm a firm believer in volunteering in the community, working for the common good. I believe that taxes play an important part in providing services and benefits for the community, and I support that. As costs go up, I don't mind paying a higher amount to support my community. But I ask that you consider how the higher costs of food, healthcare, and utilities in this economic downturn are already affecting your constituents. My issue with the current tax levy that has been proposed is the use of the lookback to capture revenue. The county levy for December 23 to November 2024 was 73,802,243. That included $10,975,000 for the mental health board. On March 19th of 2024, the McHenry County voters passed a referendum to remove the mental health board from the county levy and to instead raise the sales tax a quarter percent to fund that board rather than through the property tax levy. This went into effect July 1st, 2024. At the time of the voting on the referendum, voters were assured that our tax levy would decrease. Of the funds paid for by the county board through the use of the tax levy, the mental health fund has been the highest expenditure. The FAQs at that time stated that if the referendum passed, the McHenry County Board would eliminate the mental health board property tax levy and would not keep both the sales tax and the tax levy. The county levy for December 2024 to November 2025 was 64,994,097. This was the result of the mental health tax, uh, the mental health levy reduction. But bear in mind, we still pay the slight increase in sales tax that supports the mental health board. It's my understanding that this has resulted in a larger amount being raised for the mental health board, and I do believe that is a good thing. The problem is that now the board proposes to use a lookback to determine the levy for the next fiscal year. This process allows the board to look at the last three years of tax levy and choose the highest levy for the coming year. Thus, the levy proposed now is the same as for December 2023 to November 2024, which is when we were still including the mental health board in the property tax levy. This seems to me to be a disingenuous path. It ignores the changes made to fund the mental health board and instead says the reduction was just fleeting. It feels like we are being double taxed. I understand that this board voted to pay for increases for several positions, including for the board chair. I appreciate that trying to get the pay scale up to community standards can be very important. But this is a particularly difficult time as wages are stagnating, unemployment is high.
Summarize your comments, please.
All right. And it seems to me it's poor timing. I understand that costs go up, but to almost immediately recapture that which we voted to eliminate seems monumentally unfair. Thank you.
I've called all those who have checked that they wanted to speak, so this will conclude our public comment portion of the meeting. I'll move on to appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission as of November 18, 2025. Mr. Kaminski makes a motion, Mr. Thomas seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, do any standing committee chairs or liaisons have reports for us tonight? Mr. Kaminski?
On behalf of the general lady from District 6, Pam Altough has asked me to, uh, give a little update on the Fox Water Management Meeting. Uh, the online web service is closed as of Monday for maintenance. It'll be back up soon. The stickers for the Chain of Lakeford Water Crafts will begin, begin to be on sale January 5th, 2025. Every year, we pull the plug on the chain to drain it. The reason being is the winter snow and the, uh, spring rains, we want to make room for them. So that began Monday, November 17th, and it should be completed by December 1st. They've looked at the forecast and they don't feel that we're going to have enough rain to make a difference. And also, uh, as of November 1st to 30th April of 2026, the dam is now closed. It'll be reopened on Mayday, 2026. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Von Bergen?
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure everyone is aware that, um, the November 26th meeting for PHCS has been rescheduled to December 3rd at 1:00 PM. Thanks.
Ms. Grino?
Yes, uh, this is just a reminder that the Workforce Development Board is at 7:30 in the morning, uh, at the, um, location on... What? Oh, Russell, that's right, 500 Russell. Thank you very much. 7:30 AM.
Seeing no other reports, we'll, uh, have a presentation today by, uh, Pace for their fiscal year 26 budget. With us today, we have our rep to the Pace Board, Director Erin Smith, and, uh, Ed Gallagher, is he joining you today?
That's you. Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Bueller. I'm sorry, not good morning. Oh, you, good morning. Good evening, Chairman Bueller and members of the board. As Chairman Bueller indicated, I'm Erin Smith, McHenry County's representative on the Pace Board of Directors. On behalf of the board, we thank you for the opportunity to present our 2026 operating budget and capital program. First, I must acknowledge and also celebrate the recent passing of Senate Bill 2111. We are deeply grateful to the legislators who recognize the essential role public transportation plays in connecting communities and improving lives. And who understood the devastating impact that a lack of new funding would have had on our passengers, our regional economy, and our employees. And I want to personally thank Chairman Bueller and those of you on the board and in the room who spoke in favor of funding public transportation and reached out and made your voice heard. This legislation ensures that Pace can not only maintain service but also enhance it. With this new investment, we can deliver more services, increase frequency, expand bus-on-the-shoulder operations, and explore innovative solutions to meet growing demand. And long-term system improvements like those included in our revision plan can now become a reality. This reimagining of our network will expand service, increase frequency, and deliver a better transit system for our region. We've prepared various service concepts for the region, and now with more clarity on the future of transit funding in Illinois, we will release our draft network plan in 2026. And each of you has a packet of information with revision information, including some scenarios of what it might look like for McHenry County. This is a new chapter for Pace and for all transit across northeastern Illinois. We look forward to the opportunity to improve our system for our riders and our communities. As the system begins to be reorganized under the Northern Illinois Transit Authority, otherwise known as NIDA, we are committed to working through this transition process with our county partners. With the new service standards and performance metrics to be implemented under NIDA, it will be important that we continue to work together on what the future service in McHenry County should look like. Before updating you about the Pace 2026 budget, I'd like to update you about how the challenges stemming from the fiscal cliff did not stop Pace from delivering our riders today and for planning for the future. First, thank you Chairman Bueller, members of the board, and county staff for a great partnership with MC Ride, which provides essential service for residents to get to work, school, shopping, and medical appointments. Pace manages the rider reservations and dispatching through the Pace Call Center. We've also made the reservation process easier for riders with Pace Trip Check. Now suburban ADA paratransit riders, as well as users of Pace-operated dial-a-ride services, can use Trip Check to view trip information and cancel trips without having to call the Pace Call Center. The innovative McRide Connect program is also providing affordable on-demand transportation for McHenry County residents using transportation network companies. The county has been a great partner with Pace on MC Ride and MC Ride Connect, and we're committed to continuing to collaborate on innovative transportation solutions for McHenry residents. Last year, I reported that in coordination with the county and the city of Crystal Lake, we adjusted Route 550 trips to operate via Virginia and Northwest Highway in Crystal Lake with a slight growth in ridership activity along that segment compared to last year. We conducted our customer satisfaction survey this year with 90% of McHenry County residents reporting that they were satisfied with their Pace fixed route service, and we were able to collect valuable data about trip purposes with the majority of respondents reporting using transit to get between home and work locations in the county. Our ADA customer satisfaction survey results were also positive with 89% of respondents reporting being satisfied or very satisfied with the ADA paratransit service. In particular, riders were satisfied with customer service, especially driver performance. Also, the perception of on-time performance was improved significantly compared to last year. We also learned from riders what they want us to continue to focus on, including scheduling, on-time pickups, and travel times. We continue to support innovative programs such as on-demand and VanGo. Pace launched its first VanGo in 2023. VanGo is a reservation-based round-trip service designed so you can drive within a defined zone around a transit station for getting to and from your job any day of the week. And we are actively working on a new VanGo service around the Pingree Road Metro Station in Crystal Lake. Planned for implementation in 2026, this new VanGo option will offer last-mile service for commuters wanting to connect to employment destinations in the area like Stryker, Snap-on Tools, Northwestern Medicine, Mercy Health, and NAC Manufacturing, just to name a few. We've also worked collaboratively with Pioneer Center to expand our Advantage Van Program, which helps not-for-profit human services organizations, workshops, and agencies provide work-related transportation for people with disabilities. In March, we were thrilled to join U.S. Congressman Bill Foster and McHenry County Board members Larry Smith, Carolyn Campbell, and Brian Sager to celebrate the award of $1 million in community project funding. This funding will improve the electric ADA paratransit, will provide electric ADA paratransit vehicles for McHenry County, enhancing mobility options for individuals with disabilities and supporting the region's commitment to sustainable transit solutions. So now let's talk about the 2026 budget. Now that the legislators have acted, there are modifications to our 2026 budget. Senate Bill 2111 is expected to provide over $1.2 billion in new operating funding for our region. While this is a transformational level of funding, it will take time for the money to flow. RTA has estimated there will be an additional $564.7 million available to support service in 2026. Of that funding, $56.7 million has been added, increasing the available funding for the regional ADA program from $280.1 million to $336.8 million, which will allow us to operate the taxi access and rideshare access programs through next year. The possible suspension of tap-and-wrap programs due to funding shortfalls was a major concern voiced by Pace and our riders over the past six months. So far this year, there have been 1.9 million doll, 1.9 million rap rides. The loss of these services would have affected riders who depend on them to get to work, medical appointments, or to live their lives. I am happy to report that now with the funding secured, these essential programs for ADA-certified riders will continue. Pace will see $18.9 million in additional funding to support suburban bus service, increasing the funding from $257 million to $275.9 million, which will allow us to be able to maintain scheduled bus, scheduled service levels and continue to make targeted service improvements throughout the region while planning more robust service enhancements. the region while planning more robust service enhancements as part of our revision process. And the fair increases that have been proposed will be put on hold. That is at the direction of Senate Bill 2111. For our capital program, this year we're celebrating major milestones that I... and I'd like to share a few of those with you. One of Pace's top priorities is to reduce our carbon footprint and improve the quality of our community's environment. With Project Zero, Pace's goal is to operate a full fleet of zero-emissions vehicles by the year 2040, and this year's capital program takes a positive step towards meeting that goal. We're pushing forward on procuring hybrid and battery electric buses to further our commitment to a cleaner, more sustainable future. Just last week at our board meeting, we unveiled our newest hybrid electric bus, underscoring the agency's ongoing investment to cleaner, greener transit options that reduce emissions and modernize the suburban bus fleet. Pace's investment in hybrid technology aligns with state and regional sustainability goals and reflects our commitment to reducing the carbon footprint while maintaining dependable, high-quality service for riders. As Pace continues its transition to a zero-emissions fleet, the purpose... the purchase of these hybrid electric buses will allow the agencies to replace vehicles that are beyond their useful life with vehicles that are better for the environment while also meeting our commitment to our goal of operating a zero-emissions fleet by 2040. This phased transition is critical to maintain the fleet needed to continue providing service to our customers, and it allows the industry time to address the challenges related to infrastructure improvements and vehicle production limitations and funding to support zero-emissions operations. Our River Division Electrification Expansion Project for our garage in Elgin continues to progress. Some of the services operating in McHenry County are based out of our River Division. Design and construction costs are fully funded to outfit the River Division facility to operate an initial fleet of 20 battery electric buses and up to 35 electric paratransit vehicles. Ultimately, this division will house 119 40-foot electric buses. In April, we broke ground on the electrification of Pace North Division in Waukegan, which will become an all-electric bus facility. Once completed, North Division will have the capacity to charge and house a fleet of 60 zero-emission buses. We've also made progress on Phase 1 of the Southwest Division Electrification and Expansion Project for our garage in Bridgeview. In closing, I must point out that despite the new funding, all of our agency's successes would not be possible without our frontline employees, including our bus operators who interact with our riders every day. This includes an elite group of bus operators known as the Million Milers, who are honored for driving at least a million miles without a preventable accident. This prestigious group of operators goes on to serve as line instructors and mentors to train new bus operators. Their professionalism and safe driving skills will have an impact on our agencies for year to come. Pace's mission remains unchanged: to serve our customers with safe, equitable, efficient, and reliable public transportation. And we will do more now that we have funding. On behalf of myself and the Pace Board of Directors, I want to thank you for your time this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Campbell?
Not really so much a question, but earlier in the month during Green Expo at the college, I had an opportunity... I often see Ed Gallagher out in our community, helping to get the word out about the great services that Pace provides. And as I was standing there, two parents with their daughter had walked up to talk to Ed, and the beaming on their faces as they talked to him about the services that Pace provides. She is in need of paratransit... so she... ADA paratransit. She gets picked up from her home. She gets taken to where she needs to go. Her parents were just ecstatic that she was... that they didn't have to worry, that she was well taken care of, and she was just so excited with her independence that that gave her. And they couldn't... honestly, they could not have said more. Very grateful to Pace. They were very grateful and hopeful that our board continues to support the work that you do and the services you provide. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'm sure Ed does as well.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Erin, for joining us.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, moving on to the routine consent agenda. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the routine consent agenda? Ms. Grino?
17B 6.11, 17B 6.12, 17B 6.13, and 17B .614 to be considered as one.
Okay. Mr. Kaminsky?
I'd like to have 17B 6 dot 4, 17B 6 dot 5, 17B 6 dot 7 be combined as one, be voted on.
Okay, any others? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda, less items 17B 6 4, B 6 5, B 6 7, B 6 11, B 6 12, B 6 13, B 6 14. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Smith. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kaminsky, I understand you want to make the motion to approve items 17B 6 4, B 6 5, B 6 7. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Scala seconds the motion. Discussion, Mr. Kaminsky?
None, just vote on.
Okay. Seeing no further questions or discussion. We're going to need a moment to set it up. Would you like to make a friendly amendment to yours? And we'll take them one at a time. It'll be quicker than them trying to add them all together. So you make a motion to approve item 17B 6 4, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Scala. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting on 17B 6 4? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 17B 6 5. Mr. Sager makes the motion.
Your willingness to accept, I would prefer to forward a motion to extend the motion for all that is... which is before us, which includes additional items 5, 6, and 7. Extend the majority.
5 and 7?
5, 6, and 7.
It's going to take them longer to set it up than it is for us to vote on.
But they don't have to set it up at this exact moment.
He's saying that we do. He has no other way to record it than to set it up.
They can't come back and record it?
I don't think he can come back and do it. 6, 4 is already passed, 6 5 and 6 7. Mr. Collins?
I meant to vote yes and not no. Can I correct my vote, please?
Pardon me?
I meant to vote yes, not no. I pushed the wrong button. On the last one. I voted in error.
We're going to need a motion to reconsider it in order to do that.
I thought you could just correct it. Then just leave it for now.
I withdraw my suggestion. I don't understand it, but I'll withdraw the suggestion.
Okay, we have ready. So a motion to approve items 17B 6 5 and B 6 7 together. Mr. Scala makes that motion. Mr. Kaminsky seconds. Open the voting, please. Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. We're going to take these four quickly, one at a time. Please read through it. I'll entertain a motion to approve 17B 6 11. Mr. Scala makes a motion. Mr. Shorten seconds. Any discussion? Scala, second. Shorten. Ms. Grino, discussion?
Yes, the reason that I pulled these items is that they're 2026 capital expenditures being submitted prior to the approval of the 2026 budget.
Okay, any other comment? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 17B 6 12. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Smith. Discussion, Ms. Grino? Okay, seeing no further discussion, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 17B 6 13. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Smith seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 17B 6 14. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Smith seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of the routine consent agenda and miscellaneous items. We have one item for review tonight, the ordinance demanding the McHenry County Ethics Ordinance, which will be voted on next month. Next, for action tonight, we have a motion from Mr. Scala.
Yeah, before I make my motion, I just want to be clear with the board. What was in the board packet this evening had a couple of small errors in it, and Carrie had pointed them out to me, and I asked her to just print out the corrected version, which she did. We put it at your place this evening. So it was just some minor errors. If you'd like to know what those minor errors are, you can ask Carrie, but it was just when she was doing the work. So just FYI, that's what we're making the motion on in regards to that. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 16B 1...
18.
Or I'm sorry, 18. My bad. An ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for McHenry County, Illinois for the fiscal year December 1, 2025 through November 30, 2026. And 18B 2, an annual budget and appropriations ordinance for the county of McHenry, Illinois for the fiscal year December 1, 2025 through November 30, 2026. 18B 3, waiver of the 30-day review requirement for an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 property tax levy for the county of McHenry, Illinois. And 18B 4, an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 property tax levy for the county of McHenry, Illinois.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Collins. Before we start the discussion on the county's 2026 budget levy and abatement, I would like to say a few words. The McHenry County Board has been more than diligent in reducing our share of property taxes over the past decade, reducing our levy from $79.4 million in fiscal year 2017 to $64.5 million in fiscal year 2025. This board's fiscal stewardship has kept tens of millions of dollars in the taxpayers' pockets. On average, about $1,000 per property taxpayer. The county board has maintained this real property tax relief despite a 24% increase in inflation over the past six years, as well as the loss of $18 million in revenue from the ICE detainee contract. In addition, we faced other unfunded mandates, such as the Safety Act, which cost us, not as reported in the newspaper this morning, not just $1 million, it's $1 million per year. All told, that's over $22 million in unfunded mandates that we faced in the last four years with inflation on top of it. There's a time when property tax relief comes at a cost for fiscal stability of the county, potentially at the cost down the road, we don't know, of fully funding possibly law enforcement and maintaining law and order. I encourage you to vote for the lookback so McHenry County can continue to provide the services and personnel that keep our county the safest of all in Illinois for our size. And finally, this lookback is the path, the best path, that allows us to keep property taxes as low as possible in the years going forward. Thank you. Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes, and I propose an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. That amendment would eliminate the lookback provision. Tonight, before the meeting, I handed out a... an ordinance amendment. With that, there are two other pages of the amended CPI and new growth. That ordinance primarily changes Section 2 from a $73 million request to a $67 million request. There are other details in it, but I would... in addition, this motion would no longer make the lookback necessary, so those two portions of the...
The abatement, you mean?
The abatement, I'm sorry. The abatement necessary, so those two motion... portions of the motion would be eliminated. It would only be 18B 1 and 18B 2 that would be passed. 18B 3 and 18B 4 would be removed because we are not taking the lookback, so that would be the case. So in essence, what we are doing is increasing the tax base by the amount of money that would be allowed through the cost of the Consumer Protection Index and the new growth only, nothing more.
Okay, that's Mr. Gotamaller's motion. Is there a second? Mr. Kaminsky seconds. Discussion? Ms. Grino?
Illinois has the highest residential property taxes in the nation, and remember that we are only one out of 12 taxing bodies with nine pensions on the average property tax bill. In either case, we're looking at $22 a year or $36 a year with either of these two scenarios, which could easily be multiplied by a minimum of 12. And with the lookback circumventing PTAL, which limits the increases to CPI, which would be 2.9% or 5%, whichever is less, that could be as much as $450. And that's a minimum because highly likely that the other taxing bodies on property tax bills would be much more significant than our impact. This impacts young families, first-time homebuyers, retirees on fixed incomes. It destroys the middle class, which is actually the goal of socialism in this state. And as a board, we have the opportunity to work with county administration and the chair to continue the efforts of this budget season in aligning expenditures with revenue. When we don't cut, our constituents have to.
Okay, seeing no further comments, we'll do a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Against habit? Against habit? We're back to our original motion for the lookback. I think I heard it pretty clearly, what the vote was on that. I think the request is delaterious. So we're gonna move back to the original, the original motion. Pardon me?
To amend, or to ask for a division of the House, I'd like to see the vote total.
Okay. Let's call the roll on this. Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
How did I get just recorded? Okay.
Okay. He's shown as a yes.
That's fine.
Okay, motion does not carry. We are back to the original motion as presented in the packet. Discussion? Seeing? Mr. Hendricks?
I just want to point out, a vote for this is a lie of what we said last year. It's an absolute joke that we're doing this. And this is, what, four hundred percent increase from what was just proposed? Supporting this is an absolute betrayal to our voters. It's absolutely ridiculous. It's indefensible. You can defend a two point nine percent CPI and new growth. You can defend flat. You can defend cut. It should be one of the five policies that we proposed in our budget policy that was unanimously agreed to by this board in May of this year. The fact that, you know, we went through this whole process through the, through the whole year, and then at the end of September came, we're surprised with this lookback, which we previously said we would never do, or it wasn't even an option. It's ridiculous. It's indefensible. Anybody who votes for this, you know, I hope you can live with your vote.
Ms. Greenow?
There's a reason that we have the PTAL statute that limits us and that this would be the largest tax increase for this body in history under our jurisdiction. I, this is exactly what we told people that we would not do. And I don't even understand how this even got to this point in this budget season. But I can tell you one thing, nothing like this will ever happen again.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Clerk, please open the voting. Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion does not carry. We're gonna have to pass something here today, folks. Mr. Shorten?
I'm not even sure procedurally how we get back to it, but I would like to.
We would require a motion to reconsider.
I would like a motion to reconsider on the.
Prevailing side.
I can't do either.
Mr. Collins?
Motion to reconsider.
Is there a second?
We're reconsidering the motion to.
For the lookback.
For the look, no, I'm not, I'm not moving to reconsider.
No, no.
Is there a second? Mr. Gotamaller?
Procedurally, as I understand it, somebody who was on the prevailing side of one of these motions.
A no vote would have to make a motion.
A no vote would have to make a motion to change either one. So a no vote on the, my motion to amend would be allowed to make a motion to reconsider. A no vote on the lookback would be allowed to make a motion to reconsider.
So either one?
Either one, but you have to be a no vote. If you're a yes vote on either of those, on one of those, you know, if you're a yes vote, you can't, and you were on this defeated side, you can't make a motion to reconsider.
Ms. Campbell?
I would make a motion to reconsider, if that's what you want to do.
To reconsider eighteen B one, two, three, and four was the original motion that would be reconsidered.
Right, which is what we just looked on, which is what we just voted on. Yes, that's what you were asking for, correct?
Is there a second? Mr. Shorten?
I was just trying to clarify.
I do not have a second. Mr. Scala will second the motion to reconsider. Well, we just voted on eighteen B one, eighteen B two, eighteen B three, and eighteen B four. Right. Mr. Gotamaller?
We had a full board vote on this. I don't understand why we would change it now. It's a motion to reconsider. I guess we gotta vote on the motion to reconsider first.
We're gonna have to get something passed here tonight. We're gonna need a budget and a levy.
I understand. So we do the motion to reconsider first, and then you decide on the book.
Correct. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
We discussing the motion to reconsider.
Yes, I was hoping that I could see what the vote was. That sort of flashed through on the screen pretty quick. Is that a possibility to bring that back up for me to view? Well, if they're gonna bring it back up, I'd like to see it, I guess, but I can do it. Okay.
Okay, aside from Mr. Smith looking back, is there, is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Mr. Hendricks?
I just guess, just to clarify, this motion to reconsider, you'd vote no if you don't want the lookback, and you'd vote yes.
You would vote if you don't want to reconsider the vote.
Correct, for the lookback only.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm correcting this.
Kyle?
The motion to reconsider has the effect of placing the question back before the tribunal. So if ultimately what is being asked to be reconsidered, that would need to be clarified. But if the motion to reconsider is on the vote that just happened, then the motion to reconsider would have the effect of placing the question as if it wasn't voted on yet. So it wouldn't be necessarily a vote for the underlying motion necessarily, but it would make it available and open to be amended again at that point.
Correct. Ms. Greenow?
So if the ten people who voted against the lookback did not want the lookback to be reconsidered, they would vote no on this motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Shorten?
So procedurally, to get back to CPI and new growth.
We would need to approve this motion to reconsider. Somebody would have to make a motion to amend.
Thank you.
If that was their desire. Mr. Gotamaller?
I'm not usually lost procedure, but can I make that motion? Because I was on the defeated side.
So restart the clock here? Once, once the motion to reconsider is dispensed of, yes or no, or it would have to be yes in order for us to be at the original item to be reconsidered, then anybody would be allowed to make a motion, correct?
Anyone would be allowed to make a motion to amend, but to make the motion to amend exactly what Mr. Gotamaller had suggested, Mr. Gotamaller brings up a good point, because that particular motion was defeated, there would have to be another motion to reconsider to reopen the question about whether or not the motion to amend would then be considered again, if that makes any sense. So because it's, because it's narrowed to that particular amendment, not to bar any and all amendments, if that makes any sense. But you were correct.
Ms. Greenow?
So if we vote to reconsider, then somebody who voted against the CPI would have to make the motion to.
Reconsider.
Reconsider that.
Correct.
Okay.
Being the prevailing party, yes.
But we could make a new, a motion for a new amendment.
Correct.
All right.
Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Seeing done? Seeing Mr. Kaminsky?
Last, a clarification on what we're exactly about to vote on right this minute.
You are voting on whether we should reconsider item eighteen B one through four, which was the original motion made.
On there, John, thank you.
You're not voting on that motion. We're just voting to reconsider it. Mr. Shorten?
If, if we don't do a motion to reconsider and bring it back, we, we can't move forward at this point.
Correct.
Thank you.
We have nothing to move forward with. But we're gonna get something done here tonight. So seeing no further comments, all in favor of the motion to reconsider? Against? Okay, motion carries. So we are back to our original motion to approve item eighteen B one, two, three, and four. Any discussion? Mr. Shorten?
So again, to get back to a vote on CPI and new growth, is that also a motion to reconsider, or are we reset at this point? I voted for CPI, failed, so I cannot.
Correct. Mr. Gotamaller?
I was gonna say just what was just said. Somebody, if somebody wants to go back to CPI alone, we need someone of the nine people that voted against that to change their mind and vote for CPI, or to make that motion.
Make that motion to reconsider. Ms. Van Hoff makes the motion to reconsider. Ms. Greenow seconded.
So now there's a motion on the floor to reconsider CPI new growth. Is that correct?
If it's, if it's recognized, is the correct answer.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to reconsider? The motion made prior by Mr. Gotamaller for CPI new growth, right?
No, I think you, I think she, you. I thought she has to, I think we have to have a voice vote on whether or not hers is allowed to.
Correct. But we're discussing the motion Ms. Van Hoff just made to reconsider. The CPI and new growth. Ms. Greenow?
So to clarify, for us to vote again on the amendment, we have to vote yes on this motion to reconsider?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Scala?
I, I feel like we have board members that are confused about what's going on. I, I guess we, we have a motion that is now on the table before us.
Yes, motion before us is eighteen B one, eighteen B two, eighteen B three, and eighteen B four.
Which is, which is the lookback proposal.
Correct.
So can we vote on that? And if that is fails?
We've got a motion on the floor to reconsider the amendment that was presented for CPI and new growth.
Okay.
And a second.
Okay, got it.
Is there any further discussion on Ms. Van Hoff's motion to reconsider? Mr. Gotamaller?
Just to clarify, a yes motion now lets us reconsider the amendment that was defeated?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Ms. Greenow?
So now we vote on the CPI and new growth? On the amendment?
No. We, we would need that motion to be made still.
Well, we made a motion to reconsider. Do we then have to make the amended motion?
Yes.
And since this has all been reconsidered, Joe can make it again? Okay.
Actually, I don't think I can. I think, if I can, I remake my motion, but I, I thought it. Okay. Reconsider, I make my motion, my amendment.
Okay, is there a second? Ms. Krieger, seconds? Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none? You ready? Well, eighteen B three and four will not apply to this one because that pertains to the lookback. Mr. Kaminsky?
Need Dan to fix the tablet if you're going for a vote.
He's coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no further comments. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion does not carry. We are back to our original motion, which is to approve eighteen B one, two, three, and four. Mr. Collins?
Can I speak on the motion, the original motion now?
Yes.
Okay, so it's on the floor, okay. Tonight's vote is about responsibility. The look, the lookback option is a tool that ensures McHenry County stays on firm financial footing. It's about preserving our ability to fund law enforcement, maintain roads, and provide the services our residents depend on. If we fail to act, we risk leaving this county structurally unstable for years to come. We're looking at four, five, four point five million dollar shortfall next year. I'm sorry, twenty twenty-seven. Let's be honest about what we got here. We shifted money two years ago, ten million dollars roughly of property tax funding to the. $10 million roughly of property tax funding to the mental health board. That fulfilled the promise, removed that portion from the levy. And it was the right move for mental health services. But those dollars are now restricted and can't be used for general operations. That decision permanently reduced the county's property tax base. And as a result, we have at least a $3.5 million shortfall this year and a $4.5 million gap right behind it. I take exception to my colleague, Mr. Hendrick's words about lying to people. Many of us were not on the board when that decision was made. And that broad kind of statement is, is not necessary in our, in our environment that we have today when we try and work together. We try and make the best decision possible for this county so that we can move forward and do the work that the county demands that we do. The lookback corrects the imbalance. It doesn't undo the referendum and simply restores our fiscal responsibility. For 10 years, this county has done everything that taxpayers have asked us to do. We've eliminated debt. We are a debt-free county. We kept spending growth well below inflation. Even now with this adjustment, we are abating $4.3 million of the levy increase back to our constituents. If we had taxed to the maximum level every year for the last decade, our levied tariff would be about $84 million instead of the $69 million being proposed. 13% has been thrown around out there and a lot of other percentages. And while going from 64 to 73 is 13%, we're abating back. It's about a 6% growth in our tax base. Not 13%, 6%. Yet tonight, some of the very members who voted these budgets out of committee, and I want to stress that, every single department comes in front of a committee and presents a budget. And every single committee moves that budget on. So there's no surprises on what the costs are tonight to this county going forward. It's easy to campaign on never raising property taxes. It fits neatly on a postcard. But governing is harder. Government requires courage. Fiscal responsibility isn't about slogans. It's about stewardship, stewardship. Our job is not to do what's popular tonight. It's to protect the county's future. So tonight, I'm voting for this lookback option, for fiscal responsibility, for responsible government, and for the stability this county deserves. I urge me, my colleagues, to do the right thing tonight, to find the courage to stand up and do our jobs. Let's put McHenry County on solid, solid financial ground, not just for this year, but for the next generation. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes. I have no problem with being on sound financial footing. But I do have a problem with the fact that this board, five years ago during Jack Frank's reign, voted to have a five-month fiscal reserve. Rewrite now with the budget proposed at the lower number, have a five-month and three-week, just slightly less than three-week reserve. That extra three weeks is about $1.7 million a week, if you do the math. And what we are asking this body, the public, to do with this new budget, with this lookback option, is increase taxes by another week, $1.7 million, just so we can have a bigger reserve. That's what this money actually does. And that's why I will not support a lookback option because I didn't vote to have a five, a six-month reserve. I voted to have a five-month reserve. And we have a five-month, a 5.6-month reserve right now. And the reason we have a shortfall is because we put too much money in the bank and didn't budget it properly. That's not what we're supposed to be doing with our tax dollars. If we had a true need that was coming before this board, you know, we're building a road, or we're building a building, or something that actually needs to be done, I'd be more than happy to vote and support that. I am not interested in supporting an additional month worth of reserves for this board that the board didn't even ask for. And that's why I will not be voting for a lookback.
Ms. Greenow?
Any board member who is a constituent, when the referendum was posted for the mental health board and voted for that referendum, was aware that we were removing this from the levy and that that was the intention of the board going forward? Those taxes, that $10 million-plus dollars, are still being paid by our constituents just through a sales tax rather than this property tax levy. Now, this lookback, it's not just getting back $10 million one year. It's year after year after year after year. And if you think that a board that can't even remember for 15 months that we said we wouldn't do this is going to remember an abatement in two years? I, I can't, that would be very dishonest because we won't. We don't. That's our record. This is what we do every year. I will not be voting for this. PTEL was put there. It is a statute to limit what taxpayers have to take in increases. It's bad enough. We have the highest residential tax rates in the nation. People are leaving. Our middle class is being broken. Retirees can't stay here. People like living here, but they cannot bear the burden of this. And we're the smallest little part of their property tax bill. And we won't leave them alone. We can find this money. Joe is absolutely right about the reserve. There's $55 million in our general fund reserve. We are debt-free. We, we are a very affluent county. And with good fiscal management and us doing our jobs over this next year, we can turn around our spending and get things under control.
Mr. Kaminsky?
I would remind the audience that you are here to observe a public meeting. We've had public participation already. And I understand everybody's passionate about certain issues, but we need to be able to conduct the meeting in an orderly fashion. So I thank you for refraining from applause. Mr. Kaminsky?
Our treasurer gave us a presentation. She had two scenarios. But whatever we looked at, it was a downward trajectory. And there was a red line. In option A, we're going to bust that red line and we're going to have to take some of our funds to pay it. The other one was the lookback. And in taking that lookback, we were a knat's hair right above that red line. You sneezed the wrong way and we busted that red line. But we told the citizens of McHenry, hey, we're going to not take that money. We're going to put it in sales tax. So I can't do the lookback. That would be lying to them. But to expand on Mr. Kern's statement, the words that he was saying, that we have to do things, let's carry it out a little bit further. What happens when the ATM card goes bust? And the ATM is our constituents. When they dry up and don't have the money, we're still in the same hole. So either option we take, we have a problem feeding the feast and we need to take care of it. Whatever option, that red line is right there. So we have to fix what the problem is of eating the money that we're taking from our constituents. And I believe we can do it with just the CPI and new growth, not taking the big chunk. That's all I got to say.
Pete, did you have something?
Yeah, just, just don't want to argue either side, but I want to be real clear, eyes wide open about when we talk about our, the strength of our general fund. It is a strong general fund. Our FICA and IMRF funds are not. And they're being kept alive by the general fund. And that's really to, kind of your, what you're telling me, Carlos. When we get into those low spots, that's exactly what's going on. We, we need, we need to strengthen our IMRF and fund and our general fund and our FICA fund. It's not a general fund five-month problem. That is not the problem. It's the other funds. We are keeping them alive with, with the general fund.
Yeah, just to add on to that a little. The fund balance and reserve policy that was passed by this board last January specifically says special revenue funds, which are FICA and IMRF, along with our other ones. In general, all these funds should maintain the least fund balance necessary to cover the current fiscal year expenditures, plus an amount to pay for those expenditures of the subsequent fiscal year needed to avoid a cash deficit position. So really, the ask of the increase is to keep the general fund strong, but to get these other funds, FICA is currently in a deficit. And even if you, it's in a deficit because of the advance from the general fund. But if you take that away completely, it's still not in a position to meet its obligations. So a lot of the, the money that we're looking to, for the increases are for these special revenue funds.
Mr. Shorten?
First round, I voted for the lookback. After I voted for the CPI new growth. I think ultimately, if the CPI new growth passes, we're going to end up talking about the lookback again next year. We'll have a, a short-term deficit that we'll have to pull from reserves of $1.87 million. And we'll be that much farther behind. But it would give us room to find the cuts, the reductions that we need to make. But people, we got to work at it. Because starting in, in July, we had committee meetings, after committee meeting, after committee meeting. And everybody punted. Pam Althoff's not here, so I'll, I'll say the words that she, she said in those meetings. Are you guys okay with this? And everyone sat on their hands and nodded, yeah. So we know that we have a, 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 I'm not going to call it a spending problem, a spending reality. In that if we're going to have a government and we're going to provide services, we have to pay for it. And we pay for it through a bunch of different methods. Some is property taxes, some is tails taxes. We have dollars that come in from grant funding. And we're supposed to monitor all those things. Now, I had a countywide elected official make the point to me that those, those officers, and this is an extreme exaggeration, but if they come to us and they have in, in their budget a statute of them made of butter, we're obligated to approve it. Now, sorry, I'm going to ramble on a little bit. Spent a lot of time in this and I've got a little, a lot built up. I, I ran into former Chair Mike Tryon about a year ago. And he talked about how things were when he took over as chairman. And when he took over as chairman, within the county, there were silos. Every single countywide elected official came forward and said, this is what I need. And the board just approved it. And Pete, you were there the whole time, I'm sure. Okay. Now Mr. Tryon. I take that back. But, but he ended up having to sit down with two of the elected officials, the sheriff and the treasurer at the time. When they came forward with, with their ask, not even ask, their demand, and he said, guys, we're broke. We got to work through it. And we've had that cooperation. We continue to have that cooperation. And we don't have our countywide elected officials coming to us with statutes of themselves made of butter. They come forward to us with asking for funding for the programs that, in most cases, we've already approved. Increases in salaries for the state's attorney's office, I think, passed through here unanimously. The, the increase in the sheriff's office, the number of deputies, the number of corrections officers, passed through here unanimously. Do we need to continue to ask questions? Yes. Do we need to be more affirmative? And our, and our requirement that those increases, when they come through, are validated? I'm not saying we don't, we vote no on things, just to vote no. We ask the right questions and if we get the answers that we need, we move them forward. And that's what we've done. So I'm not a fan of the lookback. I, I don't believe it's a lie. We're not, we're not replacing the entire amount. I don't want to vote for it again. And I would ask the people that, that voted against CPI and new growth twice now to consider making a motion to bring it back one more time. And let's pass it. And then work in the next year to, to either validate our belief that there are costs to be made or validate our understanding that they don't exist. Because we'll have to vote on the lookback again next year, one way or the other. Thank you.
Ms. Krieger?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. At the end of the day, we've, we've talked it nauseam. How do we make a motion to proceed? So that we're, we're voting on something? We, we've talked enough. How do we proceed with one or the other? To substantiate Mr. Shorty's request, when you make a motion at this point, how does that work? Because you're eliminating so many people to posture to the original way. So does somebody need to make a motion to, that wasn't on the yes for the CPI new growth? That, please clarify now.
We've got, we've got a motion on the table right now that we're discussing.
Which is?
We voted on CPI twice.
So, so right now?
Once. And the lights that I have on my screen here, looks like people want to continue discussing whether we should move down this path.
So are we, is the motion on the floor to vote on the lookback? Is that, okay. Can we proceed?
Mr. Sager?
Yes, I just want to clarify, and I'd ask Carrie to please clarify. Peter, you might want to chime in. But staff and the board has already worked hard to identify just over $6 million in cuts from previous budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So we talked about having made $4 million cuts. We've made just over $6 million in cuts. So please recognize the fact that we have been looking very hard at every opportunity. And while committees did pass many things forward as requests from various departments, we did identify over $6 million in cuts with regards to the, the hard work of staff. The second thing I would just like to reiterate is the fact that as we look at the budgeting context, I think we all know, just as in households, just as in businesses, that it is incredibly hard, incredibly hard to balance budgets. And that's never going to change. It's always going to be that way, especially when we have a growing community. And especially when with a growing community comes increases in demand for services. That's who we are. We provide services. And just as there has been inflation that has affected dramatically businesses and families and individual households, they increase the cost of doing business for the county unit of government, as well as all other local units of government. And I said, I think it's also important to recognize the fact, as my colleague, Mr. Collins, had indicated, that we have a responsibility. Our responsibility is to continue those services in as quality a fashion as we can while still managing our dollars, which I think we have worked hard to do in cutting back over $6 million in the budget. And making sure that we provide those services in accordance with the interests of the people. If the people wish us to reduce those services, because the hammer will drop at some point. And if you don't want us to do that, then please tell us what services you want us to reduce. Because we are working hard to make sure that we provide those services in as fiscally a responsible manner as we possibly can. And that is our responsibility. Our responsibility is to provide quality services as needed and wanted by the residents that we serve. And to do so in a fiscally sound manner. I submit that that's exactly what the budgets before us tonight is trying to do. So thank you.
Mr. Kerns?
Okay. I, all sides of this tonight, I appreciate everyone's opinion. Mr. Collins, you and I sometimes disagree on things, but I wholeheartedly agree with you tonight. but I wholeheartedly agree with you tonight. And I have to say something. I have never voted for a tax increase while I've been on this board. I've always been a flat levy kind of guy, or decrease. And this is the first time I've even considered this. So I want everybody to know that this isn't something that we take lightly here on a tax increase. I've never done this before. However, I do take exception when we start talking about the look back and we talk about the, and we tie it into the mental health board. We did take all that off our levy last year. We did keep that promise. The reason for my vote to do the look back for the increase with the abatements and the cuts that have been done is because even with just CPI, we are no longer sustainable. In my opinion, in several opinions here, when you start looking at the negative fund balances that we have at the end of the next three years. With the look back, the difference in that is a $1.12 a month, I believe, to the taxpayer, that, you know, when you put it to a dollar amount, it's $12.94. So I didn't multiply it out or divide that out. But $12.94 is the difference between the look back and the CPI after the abatements. I've said all year, and I've said my entire time on this board, cuts have to be sustainable. We are no longer sustainable, not because of voting for a flat levy or a reduced levy, or even with the slight increases that the board has voted on in the last couple of years. But we are not sustainable because, as was pointed out, the unfunded mandates of $1 million a year ongoing from the state, just on the Safety Act, $1 million a year. We also have lost our ICE contract because of the state. And whether we would have that now, or want it now, or who would know? Or I don't really care at this point, because it's gone. The state took it away. We wouldn't be in this position today. I've said all through the fall here, while we were having, and the summer, while we were having these discussions, that we need to cut, cut, cut. Even with a look back, we need to continue to cuts. They've made a lot of those cuts, $6 million worth. We need to balance a budget. We need to not kick it down the can down the road any longer. And I have to say, I'm proud of the fact that this board has had this deep discussion, because this really needs deep discussions. And hopefully someone gives here a little bit on these votes. But I'm looking at our levy after the abatement on the look back of 69.57, hopefully I'm correcting these numbers. And with the CPI, with just the CPI and new growth, 67.7. $1.87 million difference here. That's where we're apart. Something's got to give. However, I've already asked Transportation Department to put on our agenda in January to discuss. And first, I'm going to tell you why I've asked to put that on there. Transportation gave up a 10% of their budget this year, of that budget that they were, and Joe Kapowski, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, jump in with any of my statements. They started off with a 10% cut in their budget that went through our committee. We passed it, moved it forward. Then Transportation gave up another $500,000 to purchase sheriff cars for, out of their RTA tax, their motor fuel tax and everything. We were going to buy the sheriff's department cars, $500,000. So they lost the transportation ability to fund roads and repair things, lost another $500,000. And that'll probably be ongoing every year to do those cars. Then in our levy tonight, we reduced the bridge and we reduced the bridge, county bridge fund, from, was down to $400,000. We reduced that down to $10,000. We reduced the matching fund down to $10,000 also. So the transportation has given up a ton of cuts here this year. And I would like to say, so I've asked the transportation to put on the agenda that we start looking at and we possibly discontinue the assistance that we give to each townships to repair the bridges. Right now, we pay 20% of those bridges. And a lot of those townships can't afford that 20%. But we no longer can afford it at this point. And so something's got to give here. There's cuts coming. No matter what we pass tonight, there's cuts coming, guys, next year. It has to come. The other cuts, let's take our biggest departments. You have the sheriffs and the courthouse and those departments. Going to have to cut out of those next year. You're going to have to cut out transportation again, roads, bridges. We're going to have to cut. So these are decisions, and I heard us made statement, well, they like the pain. Well, I think that this county has, board has inflicted a lot of pain on itself in this county by being frugal over the last 10 years. We really have been very frugal. We haven't been spent on just anything and everything. There's also something else that is, that probably no one even noticed, that we levied senior service this year $2 million. We increased that to $2 million last year's budget, okay? We increased it by $350,000, if my memory serves me correct. $300,000? Okay, so we increased that by $300,000. Prior to that, it was $1,006,007 for years. It was, we levied that amount. So we increased services on the seniors, rightly so. But at the same time, out of transportation, we pay for Uber service for the senior service. I believe it's $70,000. And that has been expanded to anybody can do Uber services. So when you do cuts, we're going to end up cutting senior services. We're going to end up cutting the safety. We're going to end up cutting transportation, safety, road maintenance, bridge maintenance, everything. We're going to end up cutting it. We're going to end up pushing projects back. And what might cost you a dollar at some point, it's going to cost you $5. So again, we've come to a point of unsustainability. Now, the treasurer, when she made her presentation on Thursday, Mr. Kaminski, you're right. By when we did the look back, it leveled it off. It took away that pain, but there still has to be cuts on top of that to maintain that. There still has to be cuts. So I, for the first time, have voted for a tax increase. I have been one who's said, "I will not ever vote for a tax increase." But our problem, folks, is this isn't having anything to do with the mental health board. If the mental health board were still on here, they'd be getting, instead of an $11 million budget, they'd be getting an $8 million budget. That's what they'd be getting this year, probably about $8 million. That's what their levy would be. So don't tell me we didn't take care of the mental health board, but don't tell me we lied, because it has nothing to do with the mental health board being switched over to sales tax. What it has to do is unfunded mandates. It has to do with the inflation in the last four years that has absolutely slaughtered everyone. Every one of our vendors has raised their prices dramatically in the last four years, and we've lowered our levy. Can't do it. Can't do it any longer. And I'm sorry if I pay the price at the poll someday, but that's what it is. I can't wholeheartedly sit here and say, "I'm going to hurt the residents of this county by not being fiscally responsible to them." That's why I've changed my position on tax, on this tax thing. When every school board has taken tax at a max over the last four years, every fire department, every park district, everybody has black boxed it, and this county has been responsible. And I voted with it being responsible every time. So I will continue to vote responsible today. I will vote for this look back. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel.
The reason that we have the 5% cap is so that government doesn't overstep their bounds. It is a little bit of fiscal responsibility to make us live within that 5% cap. It is disingenuous for us to pull a loophole to take 6% or more from constituents. If you want to gain the ground back, if you want to do this, you take it. The CPI, as we are allowed to take it, you do not take this 6% or more. That's how you take that money, and you look for cuts and you move this back. We are taking more money than we need, hence the abatement of that money. But as Ms. Greeno said, that money is coming every year after that. That is why we have the 5%.
Ms. Greeno.
Oh, nope, not on. Mistake.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, thank you. I can see the point from both sides here. It defies logic in my head that one or the other didn't pass. I don't get that, I guess. So if we go to take the next vote, please make sure everyone is very clear on what we're voting on, because somewhere along the line, something had to get messed up there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? What we'll be voting on here is Item 18B1, 2, 3, and 4, as originally presented at the beginning of this meeting. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? This is the look back. Pardon me? Who is the mover and the seconder for this? Mike Scala and? Mr. Collins. Yes. Voting is open. If all voted who wish. Motion does not carry. We've got to come up with something here, folks. There's got to be a solution. Ms. Greeno.
So we have to go through the motion to reconsider the look back again, and then the motion to reconsider the CPI again, and...
If that's the route you want to take to get back to CPI, yes.
Well, do we have any other options? I mean, Larry was correct. It did not make sense, the numbers on the vote. It was weird. I don't know that people understood what they were voting for.
I thought I made it pretty clear what we were voting for. But Item 18, 1, 2, 3, and 4 is originally presented, and that was the look back. That's what's been in the packet. I'm going to recommend that we take a 10-minute recess, because I've been sitting here the whole time, and we've been here for two hours. So I need a moment. Everybody's been walking in and out, and I know where they're going, and I haven't had the opportunity. So I will entertain a motion to recess for 15 minutes. Mr. Collins makes the motion. Mr. Smith seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be back here 9:15, 9:17. 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 Mr. Scala makes that motion, Mr. Short in seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Parliamentarian is telling me that for us to move forward with a motion to reconsider that would require us to suspend our rules because they've been reconsidered twice. So I will entertain a motion to suspend our rules so that we can reconsider. Mr. Gotamaller makes the motion, Mr. Kaminsky seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to reconsider.
Sorry about that. Being a newbie here, I'll make a motion to reconsider the CPI amendment.
The, the motion would be to reconsider the question that was just asked, which was the look back.
No.
It's this, you're not voting on the look back. It's just a motion to reconsider. Okay? Do we have a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, not on the look back.
Mr. Gotamaller?
I'll make a motion to reconsider the look back, but I, so everybody's clear, I have no intention of voting for the look back when we get to that point. But I'll make it a motion to reconsider it so that we can get it on the floor.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Sager seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
All right, thanks for being patient.
Mr.? So we are, we are back to our original, where we started in the very beginning, with the motion to approve 18B 1, 2, 3, and 4. Mr. Collins had his light on first, so I'm going to call on Mr. Collins.
I'd like to call the vote. Make a motion to call the vote, please.
Okay.
A second.
Pat had his light on before he even understood what was going on.
What comes up on my screen is the order that the buttons were pushed, and that's, that's what I'm going by. Mr. Sager, a second.
We could all walk out and stop the court.
Don't you dare.
Okay, motion to call the question, so...
If you're gonna pull this, we should all just walk out and stop the court.
Who are you referring to?
You. You know that Pat wanted to make that motion. He didn't understand the process.
We asked him if he wanted to, we asked him, I'm not having this debate with you. We asked him if he wanted to make a motion to reconsider, told him what that motion entailed, and he said, no, he did not want to do so. We got a motion, we got a second. Affirmative voice vote, here we are. Mr. Collins has called the question. The previous question is what we're gonna be voting on. Or, we're voting on calling the question. Okay? We had a second. Dr. Sager. It's not debatable, so there's no discussion. So we're gonna have a voice vote. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Okay, first I'm going to ask for a motion to re-enter open session. Mr. Scala makes that motion. Mr. Short in seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries. Parliamentarians telling me that for us to move forward with a motion to reconsider, that would require us to suspend our rules because they've been reconsidered twice. So I will entertain a motion to suspend our rules so that we can reconsider. Mr. Gotamaller makes the motion. Mr. Kaminsky seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to reconsider.
Sorry about that. Being a newbie here, I'll make a motion to reconsider the CPI amendment.
The motion would be to reconsider the question that was just asked, which was the look back.
No.
It's this, you're not voting on the look back. It's just a motion to reconsider.
No.
Do we have a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Gotamaller?
I'll make a motion to reconsider the look back, but I, so everybody's clear, I have no intention of voting for the look back when we get to that point. But I'll make it a motion to reconsider it so that we can get it on the floor.
Is there a second? Mr. Sager seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
All right, thanks for being patient.
Mr.? So we are, we are back to our original, where we started in the very beginning, with the motion to approve 18B one, two, three, and four. Mr. Collins had his light on first, so I'm going to call on Mr. Collins.
I'd like to call the vote. Make a motion to call the vote, please.
Okay.
A second.
Pat had his light on before he even understood what was going on.
What comes up on my screen is the order that the buttons were pushed, and that's, that's what I'm going by. Mr. Sager, a second.
We could all walk out and stop the court.
It's just too quiet.
I know. Should we all just walk out, stop the court?
Don't you care? Okay, motion to call the question, so.
If you're gonna pull this, we should all just walk out and stop the court.
Who are you referring to?
You. You know that Pat wanted to make that motion. He didn't understand the process.
We asked him if he wanted to, we asked him, I'm not having this debate with you. We asked him if he wanted to make a motion to reconsider, told him what that motion entailed, and he said, no, he did not want to do so. We got a motion, we got a second. Affirmative voice vote. Here we are. Mr. Collins has called the question. The previous question is what we're gonna be voting on. Or, we're voting on calling the question. Okay? We had a second. Dr. Sager. It's not debatable, so there's no discussion. So we're gonna have a voice vote. Okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against.
Aye.
Motion carries. So.
All the vote.
Okay. Can you set that up? We'll do a roll call vote.
Can we clarify?
Vote. Continue debate. Is voting open?
Yes.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish. Motion does not carry. Okay, we're. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the CPI amendment. If I said that right, you understand what I mean? Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Ms. Greenow seconds. Discussion. Mr. Kearns.
We just voted on the motion to call a question.
Correct.
And that was defeated.
Correct.
So didn't we have a motion on the floor of reconsider, your reconsidered motion? That's what he's, that's what Mr. Sullivan. You're, you're yielding to him on your motion.
Okay. Mr. Gotamaller, you had your light on, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify. My understanding is Mr. Sullivan has now made a motion to open the other motion up. Correct?
Correct.
All right, so we have to, I mean, we just did this 10 minutes or an hour ago now. Okay. And that's been seconded, correct?
Correct.
So that's what's before the board right now.
Right.
So I still need some clarification.
Okay, Ms. Van Hoff?
What are we voting on now?
This is the motion to reconsider the option for the CPI and new growth. The amendment. If this passes, then we will present the amendment that was presented before. We'll vote on it. If it passes, it will be the overriding, and then we would vote on that. Correct? My understanding.
I, I'm not sure that I understand what you just said. Are we voting to open the reconsideration, or are we voting on the motion? That's.
The motion to reconsider.
The motion to reconsider. Okay. So we're not opening discussion on this. We are voting on the underlying motion.
Whether it, whether it should be reconsidered.
Whether it should be reconsidered. Okay, that's, that's what I want to make certain. If I want to make certain, I'll vote on the right thing. So a yes vote now would be to reconsider that CPI amendment.
Correct.
All right, and then we would have to vote again on the, that amendment would take its place.
Correct.
And we would vote on the CPI amendment.
Correct.
If a yes vote is the majority in this instance. Thank you.
Correct. Is there any discussion on this motion to reconsider? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries. So do we want to make that motion again for the CPI? We're there? We're there. Okay, discussion, CPI, new growth. Mr. Gotamaller?
Just to clarify then, a mo, a no, a yes vote now would approve CPI and new growth, but no look back.
Correct.
Thank you.
See no discussion? Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry. Carrie, what, if, if this passes, how much has to come from general fund balance to cover the shortfall? 1.87?
1.87.
Okay.
So that, so this one is the impact to the general fund, but it also impacts FICA and IMRF.
Correct.
So we took some of the increases from those to cover some of the deficit in the general fund. So then the current utilization of fund balance would be 2.1 for the general fund.
2.1, okay. Thank you.
Correct, for, for 26. In 27, it goes to 4, 5, and then 5.6. Correct, and it does, it just moves FICA to where it can meet its obligations, but not where it gets to the six-month level, so it can go between property tax cycles.
Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes, Carrie, while you're at it, where would it be at a five-month reserve instead of a six-month reserve? Today, where would it be if we just, if we went to a five-month reserve instead of a six-month reserve? We're moving the same amount of money, but where's the reserve at?
But the reserve, the reserve for FICA and IMRF is what we're trying to address with the look back option.
And if we move that money, that's currently from the reserve, and remove a six-month reserve goal to a five-month reserve goal, is there any loss? Is there any missed money in those funds? I mean, you've got a five, we, a five-month and six, and six tenths of a month reserve right now. We were supposed to have a five-month reserve. How much money is the difference?
Every, every month is like more over $8 million.
Okay, so we got, we got slightly less than $8 million more in our reserve fund than we're supposed to have under the board's guidelines from five years ago. And there's the difference.
So if you bring the five-month reserve down in fiscal '26 and transfer the money to FICA and IMRF, that does nothing to address '27, '28, and '29? So that number, the .64 is 5.6 million. So that would get both of. And you're talking about forgiving the loan as well? Or the loan would be included?
I'm just trying to find out when we're gonna run in the red, because what I'm understanding this is, we will run in the red in '27 with what you just said, not '26. So yes, we will have to watch what we're doing, but we don't need the look back money today.
So we'll use the fund balance in '26 to balance the budget? So when you say run in the red, you mean run out of reserves or use the fund balance?
No, I, the reserve was originally supposed to be set at five months. That's what this board passed five years ago. We have five months and six tenths of a month available today. So we should be able to balance those funds and not have a, not have a shortfall with, that's what the reserves for, is so that we have that ability.
So if we did, if we did all that in fiscal '26, move the remaining reserve to those two special revenue funds?
Yes.
Then in order to main, maintain five months of reserve going forward, even taking the look back, would drop that below five months? Next, in '27?
In '27. We got a year ago. We're taxing ourselves the other way with a look back for what we're gonna run short of in two years. Okay.
Mr. Sager?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to ask staff, we had mentioned the opportunity to take a look at a six-month freeze, and I, I'd like some response from staff with regards to that, and I do appreciate the discussions that we have had, Peter and Scott, but I'd like for your comment on that.
Well, just, just briefly, I, one of the, one of the fantastic things about this budget process, and everyone's been so engaged, is we've really looked hard at our vacancies. And as we know, we've mentioned, we've removed 18 positions from the roster, and was proposed. And I'm committed, Scott's committed, Carrie's committed to, you know, some real aggressive scrutiny of vacant positions, positions, particularly over the next six months. And, you know, even if it is, you call it a freeze, or, or call it super scrutiny, or call it whatever we will, and we would probably want to segregate elected officials and public safety officers and attorneys from, from that, but, you know, we've got an idea of what that could look like. The challenge is, we already budget for vacancies. We already budget, we, we, we plan for 2% vacancies. We, we, we pushing on that farther. And we don't know how many vacancies are gonna be next year, and we want to focus just on the general fund, but I am absolutely committed and excited, continue the good momentum that we've had this fall in looking at our vacant positions. And I know that I've got it on my department head agenda for Friday.
I appreciate that, and I also would say that that is an important element, whether or not we were to approve either one of the two options that's on the table tonight. And I, I hope that there's a commitment among the administration here to do just that, just continue that level of scrutiny regarding our options that are available to, to reduce personnel costs. Thank you.
And we did, in fact, have that conversation at our staff meeting on Monday as well. Mr. Scala?
If, if this motion is successful, I guess I would ask the board to consider looking at how we alter the budget that we would be approving tonight during the year so that we don't have reoccurring expenses being paid for by reserves. I understand what Mr. Gotamaller is saying, that we're over five months right now, which we are utilizing to prop up our two levies that are not at the current five-month reserves like they're supposed to be, or six months, because they strictly rely on property taxes. But my concern is that without making in-year cuts to something, and I don't want to be specific about what that is, my concern is that at the end of next fiscal year, when we are trying to figure out our budget for next fiscal year, the, if we don't make in-year cuts to something, we will not have the ability to fund operations for next year without going below the five-month reserve, which is what Mr. Gotamaller is making the point of. Even taking a look back next year, assuming that the board even wanted to do that, will not cover that deficit that we would have, and we would be below the five months. Again, making an assumption that we're forgiving the loans that are currently on the books, and assuming that the board is committed to propping up those two funds so that they're not having to make interfund loans throughout the year in order to meet the needs and expectations of them. So if, if, if the board is committed to that, then whether we do that through finance, or whether we do it through committee of the holes, or whatever we want to do, but somehow, some way, I would be strongly encouraging the board to look at how to go about doing that, to the tune of 2.1 million, I guess. Thank you.
Any further discussion? See none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish. Motion does not carry. I'm gonna abstain.
Chairman?
Mr. Gotamaller?
I, I'm not sure you have the right to abstain. It comes to you to vote. Are you, are you conflicted, Al?
Pardon me?
It, it comes to you for a vote. It's an eight to eight.
Do I have to take a vote?
I, I, I'm not, and what's your reason for abstaining?
I think the board should make a decision.
You're part of the board.
I'm not, I'm not a board member.
Can I call a point of order?
What's your point?
I believe we just voted on the wrong resolution, because Mr. Gotamaller had a motion to reconsider the look back. And what failed was Mr. Collins's call to question, not the motion to reconsider.
But Mr., the, the.
You had a motion to reconsider.
Calling the previous.
You did, you made the motion to reconsider.
No, I didn't. I couldn't.
The look back, and you gave the excuse why? Just, you did because you asked for it. You asked if you would be able to amend it. But then you moved on to Mr. Collins's motion, which was out of order.
And then we came back and, and Mr. Sullivan, no, his motion was.
Sullivan's, not Mr. Collins, Mr. Sullivan's.
Mr. Sullivan's motion was made.
But you had a motion on the floor. It, there was, there, the motion on the, the motion that was defeated was Mr. Collins's call to question was defeated.
Right, and then they.
So that left the discussion open on the look back.
It did, and then the motion was made to reconsider the.
His motion to reconsider was on the floor still. We didn't defeat it.
It wasn't my motion to reconsider.
We did not defeat that.
It was not my motion to reconsider. I didn't make that motion. I couldn't make that motion.
The, the motion to reconsider, when we first came back into session here, was to bring back 18, bring back the look back.
All the original one.
And we were in discussion about that after Mr. Collins' motion to, or to call the previous question failed. So we were in discussion on the look back. Mr. Sullivan made the motion to reconsider the CPI and new growth.
What happened to the motion to reconsider the look back? We never voted on it. The call to question was to, to stop discussion. That's what called the question.
And, and call the vote, but that failed.
That failed, the call to question.
So the 18, the, the look back was still.
The vote didn't fail, because you never took a vote on the look back. I'm sorry. You never took a vote on the look back, on the motion to reconsider. Parliamentarian, did that not happen? We never voted on the look back.
Hold on, Mr. Kearns has the floor. Kyle?
I believe what happened in sequence, if we're kind of going from, from what happened before, was initially there was the motion to suspend the rules, because we were out of motion to reconsider. Once that was done, there was a motion to reconsider from Mr. Gotamaller that was, that was made, and then there was a second about the look back initially, then that passed. And then there was another motion to reconsider, or there was a call to question, excuse me, there was a call to question from Mr. Collins that failed. And then there was Mr. Sullivan's motion to reconsider.
But.
That was seconded, and that's where ultimately was voted on, and then the recent vote was for the amendment which includes CPI. That's my understanding of it.
So in your own words, you just went through, we never voted on the motion to reconsider the look back. The, the motion, the one that failed.
We did not, we did not vote on that.
The one that failed was the call to question. That was nothing to do with the look back.
You're, you're talking about the underlying motion, now we're back to square one.
We should have been back to square one of the look back, the, the call, the, the motion to reconsider the look back that Mr. Gotamaller made. We never made that, we never voted on that motion. That's where we're at, we're not at then.
We're, we're almost there, because the motion to reconsider that was made by Mr. Sullivan has not passed. It needs a majority. If the board thinks I should vote, I'll go ahead and vote. And I vote no. So we're back to the original motion on the 18, one through four. 18B one through four, I'll entertain discussion. So we're again back to the original motion. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we're gonna open the vote. Clerk, please open the voting. Correct. Voting open? Voting is open.
This is the look-back.
Look-back. Are we clear? Okay. Have all voted who wish? Motion does not carry. Mr. Shorten.
I guess we need another motion to reconsider 18B, 1, 2, 3, and 4. You still got to... You still got to do a motion to reconsider on the original motion before you can do another motion to reconsider on the CPI and new growth.
Do we have to do it again? To be safe, it's probably a good idea. So, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow for reconsideration. Mr. Gotamaller makes a motion. Mr. Shorten seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Mr. Shorten.
Now, we need a motion to reconsider 18B, 1, 2, 3, and 4, to bring everything back so we can start it all over again, again.
Are you making that motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Ms. Krieger, seconds. Discussion, Mr. Sullivan?
I have nothing.
Ms. Greenow? No? If we don't have discussion, we're going to go to a vote. If there's no discussion on what we have in front of us, which is the look-back, which are items 18B, 1, 2, 3... Reconsider. Suspend the rules. Okay. Right. So, there's no further discussion on the motion to reconsider. Let's do a quick voice vote. I think that we're going to get through this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now. Now, there's a motion on the floor for 18B, 1, 2, 3, and 4, which is the look-back option. Mr. Gotamaller.
I... I can't make that motion, because I voted in the losing side of that, of the... Of the motion to go back to... I'd like to make a motion to go back to the original CPI, but I can't make that motion.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I would like to make that motion to go back and reconsider the CPI amendment and new growth.
Mr. Sager.
I make the motion discussed to amend the FY '26 budget to reflect new growth plus CPI of 2.9. 2.9, and therefore emitting the need for 18-point B3 and 18-point B4.
Is there a second? Mr. Smith, seconds. Discussion? Mr. Kearns?
What point do we call a stalemate here and start making changes to this levy?
I think we're getting pretty close.
All right. Then I would like to amend the motion to reduce the Senior Service Grant Commission back to the original $1.7 million and move that funds, those $300,000 funds, back to the general levy fund. Or general levy.
We still got the motion to reconsider on the floor that...
And I'm asking to amend the amendment.
That we haven't voted on yet, right?
Can I do that?
We have to vote on the motion that was made by Mr. Sager. Right.
Well, then I want to amend the amendment.
All in favor of reconsidering? The CPI? As long as we haven't voted on it yet, so we need to vote on it.
We need to vote on CPI.
Motion to reconsider. Voice vote. Clear the voice vote.
That was the voice vote to reconsider the look-back. I have a voice vote to reconsider the look-back, but I don't have a voice vote on the motion to reconsider.
They have us as voting by voice to reconsider the look-back. They don't have us as a voice vote to reconsider the CPI. So, I'm going to ask for a voice vote to reconsider the CPI. All in favor? Yes, sir.
Was just made... I made the motion to amend, because we've already passed all that other stuff. So, now we're on to, I made the motion to amend, and I read it, the FY '26 budget to include new growth of 2.9% and CPI, or excuse me, new growth plus CPI of 2.9% and eliminate the need then for items 18-point B3 and 18-point B4. And, correct me if I'm wrong with that, was also the motion that was seconded. And we got to vote on that.
Is there discussion? Is there any further discussion on this? Because we will be going to a vote if there's not. Okay. No further discussion? Right. We're voting on the CPI and new growth right now. Clerk, could you please open the voting? Voting is open. Okay, that passes. So, this is now our motion, is CPI and new growth. Okay? Discussion, Mr. Kearns?
Yes. Now, I would like to amend it to remove $300,000 on the levy from the Senior Grant Service Commission, which was never... Which was back to two years ago when we had the funds to do this, to the $1,700,000. And that's $300,000, move that over to the general fund. Am I saying that right, Pete? It will go to the general fund?
Mr. Kearns has the floor. If you could refrain from discussion, please.
So, that's the amendment I would like to make, because at this point, we got to start making some cuts, folks, because you're not sustainable at this. So, let's start making cuts on expenditures. I need a second. Do you have a second? I want to vote on that. I don't have to vote on whatever. I want to vote on the amendment.
I don't know that this discussion is appropriate. So, do we have a second in Mr. Kearns's motion? I don't see a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? We already voted to amend it, so we're now voting on on CPI and new growth, as amended. As amended.
We had Kearns as the mover. Did we have a second on that?
No, that was amendment that never got a second.
Dr. Sager made the motion. And who was the second? Or was it you? Dina was the second?
Mr. Sager and Ms. Krieger. Opening the vote.
Yes. Clerk, could you please open the voting? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
And I do appreciate that. And really, you know, just appreciate it, and thank you. And I'll send the rest out in an email.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scholar makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Krieger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.